Good evening, everyone. Before I call the meeting, order, I want to announce that due to COVID-19, we have individuals attending remotely as well as on-site. All participants joining by phone should mute their phones when not speaking to avoid background noise. During the meeting, please make sure that you announce yourself by name and title every time you speak so the public that is participating knows who is speaking. This is critical, given the number of remote participants and its current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General. I'll be calling the meeting to order, and I ask the clerk to announce the meeting and the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. You are hereby notified that I have called a special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, to be conducted virtually on Thursday, January 6, 2022 at 5:00 p.m. for an update on the legislative agenda and a COVID-19 update. The presentation on stormwater rates has been removed at the request of Mayor Garner. Roll call. Kane. Markley.
Here.
Here.
Stites. Davis.
This is Stites, I'm sorry, I couldn't get unmuted quick enough, I'm sorry. This is Stites, I am here.
Commissioner Davis. Bynum.
Here.
Burrows.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
McKernan.
Here.
Ramirez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Thank you, clerk. we verified that Commissioner Davis was online as well. Tonight, we'll have an update on the legislative agenda followed by a COVID-19 update. As the clerk stated, a presentation regarding stormwater rates will not be presented tonight. I would like to recognize and thank our Wyandotte County legislators that are joining us tonight. They are Senator David Haley, Representative Tom Burrows, Representative Pamela Curtis, Representative Kathy Wolfmore, Representative Louis Ruiz. If others have joined, please raise your hand and to be recognized. Senator Pat Petty, I'm sorry, Senator Pat Petty as well, thank you all for joining us tonight. I'll now turn it over to the acting administrator, Mr. House, for the legislative agenda.
All right. Good evening, Mayor.
All right, try again. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Legislative Delegation. This evening, we will present the draft UG Legislative Delegation Program. This follows up on a December 16th special session presentation in which the Commission had the opportunity to review and provide comments and discussion around the legislative agenda. This evening, the intent is to walk through the agenda, not to redo the entire presentation that the Commission saw on the 16th. And it's the opportunity to gain feedback to the Commission from the delegation on specific items that may be on the agenda. It's perhaps an opportunity to provide discussion of things that aren't on the agenda, but the delegation might suggest be considered, and also to hear from the delegation on areas of focus that they are looking at as we go into the 2022 legislative session next week. I will note that it's also, the UG is finalizing the selection of the lobbyist in Topeka who will represent the UG. That will be Mr. Paul Davis of Frederico Durst Consulting, so that's being finalized. And I know that that was of interest to the Commission, but also to the delegation as to who they could be working with directly in Topeka. So that was the intent here this evening, and so with that, unless there are any questions before we get started, we can jump into the program here. This document was shared with Commissioners and also with the delegation, so everybody should have a copy of this and to be able to follow along as we go through this. The first section here being tax and finance, you can see in there, some of these, a number of these are ones that have been in previous years legislative agendas for the UG, including the motor vehicle tax, so that a vehicle of the same make and model is taxed in the same in Wyandotte County as it is in any other county within Kansas, which is not currently the case. I won't again go through each of these. There are two in here on property appraisal and valuations, including number four, which I'll point to, which is specifically focused around BODA and encouraging appointments Six, the tax lid, again, an issue I think many are familiar with, capers. There is new language in here at the very end of this one, which is encouraging that capers consider inflationary increases for retiree pension payments, so that those pension payments don't lose value over time with inflation. See, city county highway funds, pretty straightforward on that one, and unfunded mandates. The local ad valorem tax reduction fund. We have property tax exemptions in there, countywide sales and use tax, alternative revenue sources, and allowing, number 14, allowing local governments to participate directly in federal loan programs. I'll draw your attention to number 15, which is highlighted, which is this golden years property tax. This was some discussion among the Commission at the December 16th meeting, which is, you know, are there opportunities or options that would reduce the tax impact of rising property values for existing homeowners, longstanding homeowners, you know, that are older in the community? So maybe just pause on this one and see if this language gets at what the Commission was discussing when we last met.
Commissioner McCurnan.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner McCurnan.
Yes, thank you so much. I just want to double check. Alan, did we get, did the copy, oh, never mind, I see it in the title, it says changes without tracking, because you're looking at a track changes copy, and those aren't included in the copy that came to us today.
Yes, is that?
Well, because I see in item number 15, it says comment, Commission should consider, and that direction to potentially consider is not in what we got today, so it's going to take me just a minute to go through this. If there are other places where there are suggestions or guidance for Commission, then if you could point those out as they come up, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Markley, did you have a question?
Yeah, Mayor, thanks. Just the first line, I think there's a typo, so I'm not sure what it's supposed to say. Is it supposed to say we could potentially consider, we could potentially support, or should the establishment not be establishment? Am I the only one that's seeing this as weird?
Yes, I see, could support or could potentially support, either one of those words. I probably don't want to say potentially support, if this is something the Commission is supporting.
Yeah, agreed.
So I'm just wondering, on the golden years property tax, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, on the golden years property tax, as Commissioner Markley said, maybe you might consider just taking out the first line? I mean, I don't know if you're going to, if you're, because the rest of it does speak to what it does, and if, and the concerns you have about if it's not, if it doesn't protect from foreseeable abuses, although the bill, as it was proposed, does attempt to do that. So that's just a suggestion.
Commissioner Petty, you have an additional question?
I'm sorry, I was just clicking to be off, I guess I was clicking to be off again, sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, I mean, I think to make this kind of simple, we can just say the unified government supports the establishment of a golden years homestead property tax program, or something like that, just to kind of simplify it, and everything else looks good to go from my end.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you to all the legislators for being here tonight, and as always, thank you for everything you do for the community. So, Mr. House, is this, are you asking, are you trying to get feedback from the Commission at this time based on the language that you, that is there on the legislative program?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, sorry, let me just caveat that and say that we do have the, at 7:00, we'll bring the legislative agenda back, and at that point, and adopt specific amendments to it, or adopted in whole, so if there's specific wordsmithing we need to do, we can, we also have that opportunity, we also wanted to use this to get the feedback and discussion with the delegation.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yes, that does make sense, thank you very much. I think I agree with Commissioner Davis, I think it, the wording or the type of wording he used, I think would be pretty good. I agree with number 15, I think it's something that we as a Commission should be advocating for to our delegation. So I guess there's nothing else, much for me else to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor and all. Question about, there may have, this may have been addressed in some other papers that I did not see related to this. What is the age group that we're talking about and defining as golden years here?
Commissioner, this is Alan House, and I don't have a specific, actually, number around that or age around that. I might see if there are any members of the Legislative Delegation who are, you know, have been working on this or more familiar with it, that might be able to answer your question.
This is Representative Pam Curtis, I don't know that I really have the answer. I thought Senator Haley had been working on this, but anyway, I generally would say 65 and older is what kind of that age group would be, but I'm not sure, and you know, it would kind of depend on what draft, you know, what the legislation, how it's drafted, and where that sweet spot is where they think that they can move something forward. So I'm not sure you'd want to spend a whole lot of time unless you want to specifically recommend specifics to a piece of legislation, but be generally supportive of the concept.
Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you, I lowered my hand. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Representative Curtis gave an overview. I think the date certain or age certain would be something that may be a fluid subject matter in the legislature, determining on fiscal impact it would have across the state and individual communities, and I'm sure legislators during the negotiation and/or review of the bill would come to an age certain that they would be able to identify. I don't know that it's spelled out specifically in the bill.
Thank you. Commissioner Pat Petty.
It's Senator now, but it is, the age is spelled out specifically in the bill, I'm just not, I'm not able to pull it up right now, I'm looking for it if I, but it is specifically spelled out in the bill, so there is an age, and it is, I can't remember if it's 62 or 65, but I'll try to find that bill, but it is currently already spelled out specifically in the bill. Of course, negotiations does make a difference, but that bill is on the Senate side.
Thank you, Senator. Pam Curtis.
Thank you, Mayor. It's Senate Bill 76, and it's 65 and older.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez.
My question was answered, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
All right, shall we continue?
Yes, please.
All right, moving on to community and economic development. Again, a number of these are ones that have been in previous versions, so we've got prevailing wage in there, the food sales tax, this is one that the Commission expressed broadly supportive with the caveat that some of that is baked into, you know, development agreements, so just being cognizant of that, as that is considered. We've got eminent domain and public right-of-way management. Number five and six really kind of deal with unified government's sore effort in dealing with blight around abandoned housing and rental inspections and vacant structure registries. Seven, public education, of course, critical to the, to the community. Eight around immigration, we've got nine around tourism, and the importance of that to Wyandotte County, and then 10, continue to fund and look at state funding for public transit to support efforts in Wyandotte County. Any questions on those before we move on? All right. Continuing here, we've got star bonds and economic development, again, this is similar to last year. The several items here have been added that are from the League of Kansas Municipalities around connecting links, around transportation program, funding and transportation safety, the transportation development districts, and number 16 is around supporting recreational trails, which always rate highly on resident surveys conducted every couple of years. Any questions on these or comments? All right, number 17, this is a new one, and it also ties in with the housing study that was just released by the state, and looking at affordable quality housing across the state, it's something that is also a need in Wyandotte County. Moving on, public safety. Again, these are ones that have been in the, before municipal court management and keeping that in local control. Likewise, on number two, with law enforcement discretion, we got asset forfeiture in there, emergency 911 services, and juvenile justice. Pause here for a second. All right. Number seven, community corrections, full funding for community corrections programs. Again, eight on local control for police powers, and nine alcohol regulation, C and B regulation, and then 10 is new language from LKM, which is related to cybersecurity and the need for organizations of every size, including local governments, to be prepared for that and to work with the state as a partner in that.
Commissioner Davis has a question.
Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, Commissioner Davis, District 8, could you, or maybe somebody from our state delegation, provide just some insight on the juvenile justice, assuming reform or changes that are taking place? It's kind of vague for number six, and so I just wanted to get more insight on what
Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis, if you would be willing to put those in, send me a letter or a note or something, an email, and I will get you the exact information that you're looking for in reference to juvenile justice. Juvenile justice has changed the last three or four years consistently, and I don't know what it is specifically you're asking for, but there's been a multiple changes in juvenile justice in the last three or four years, and we have bills in both chambers, so I would like to be able to answer your question accurately and not just assume and give you a, an answer that doesn't have any accuracy to it.
Thank you. Commissioner Bynum.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, Senator Jeff Pittman is in the attendees list, if we could promote him to panelists,
Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you. For the Commission's information, the delegation is spread out in both House and Senate, as you're well aware. We all have different committee assignments, so it's not that we don't know anything specifically about all of these bills and all these subject matters. The legislators associated to some of these bills may have additional knowledge, but we have a cursory review of most of the things that have come forward, unless this particular bill is in committee and you've been dealing with it as of late, it's, we can give you a glossary as to some of the questions you have, but that's why I ask specific questions and then allow us to get to the Capitol and get the bill, or get the information necessary to give accurate informations.
All right, we'll keep, keep moving here. On number 11, scrap metal, this was, this is new, it was added from LKM language. Commissioner McKernan had a, had a comment on that, I believe, last time, that we have several outstanding businesses that are in this industry here in our community, so that is of interest.
Pam Curtis.
Oh, please talk to me about scrap metal. That was my very first session, that I tried to fight to keep local control, and then I worked with the Attorney General's Office and Senator Tyson, we lost a lot of scrap metal businesses across the state because of this change, and it's never been right. But before we wade into that, please talk to me about it a little bit, just because I can provide some historical information about where we're at and kind of some of the pitfalls. Anyway, I was just surprised to see that back on your agenda, because two years after I had that battle, the UG said, we don't care about it anymore, we don't want it. So, anyway, it just surprised me to see it there, sorry.
This is, this is one that came in through the LKM kind of language review, so certainly if it's the pleasure of the Commission to pull this aside and have further consideration on it for a future legislative agenda, certainly we could do that.
Commissioner McCurnan.
Thank you, Mayor. Representative Curtis, this actually was just on the previous iteration of this, the draft that we saw, and what I had just clarified was whether or not this allowed us to engage with local scrap dealers, and you and I have a really good operation that's not too very far from where we live, and I would love to engage with them so that they could guide us, if in fact we do have local control of this, into better relations, better control, less illegal scrapping, and that's really the only thing that I had asked. I just asked, what's the intent of this? Is this to give us control over who does it, how they report, how they dispose of? And so that's really the only reason that I brought it up, is because I'm sure you have a really good relationship with Advantage as well, and I think they've been leaders in trying to get their industry to do things right in local municipalities, and so that's really the only reason that I had asked about this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Representative Curtis, I am definitely going to take you up on that offer, this is an area that I have little to none knowledge of, so I am definitely going to take you up on that offer, and I would love to learn more about it, what it was, and just the state of where it is at the moment.
Pam Curtis.
I'm sorry, I don't really want to prolong it, but just to kind of give you a little bit of a flavor for it, when I was on the ninth floor of City Hall, Mayor Joe's office, we had worked diligently for several years in our office to really have a good model of how to deal with scrap metal, because it was a real issue back then, too. And so then when I went to Topeka, we had started implementing that, and it was a local agreement, it involved the folks in Missouri, so it was very much, you know, more of a regional effort to combat scrap metal. And then the state, just as they did with prevailing wage, just pulled the rug right out from under us and said, you cannot have any ordinances dealing with scrap metal locally. So we actually were on a very good path, and so I don't know if there's still people around, like in the police department, who worked on that plan. John Urecheck was kind of lead from our office on that. I think Delia York may have been also involved. So revisiting that, there, we really did have a good plan in process, and the state just pulled the rug out from under us, like they do on so many local control issues. So maybe that helps, just kind of frame up why my surprise and my reaction. Thank you for the indulgence.
Pam Curtis, keep your hand raised.
All right. Moving on here, number 12, this is the Kansas Emergency Management Act, and the focus of this one, you'll see it show up in another area, but this one is really about giving the, restoring the ability of the executive branch to declare a state of emergency when needed, and certainly, I think the governor just declared one a half an hour ago, or an hour ago, so that's what this is in regards to. We have, number 13 is the We have number 13 is the Youth Fatality Review Board. So this is continuing to refine that. I believe Senator Petty's been involved with this quite a bit and has worked with our health department to continue to, to improve this, this process.
I believe Kathy, you had a question.
I'm sorry, Mayor, did you call on me? I'm having trouble with my raising hand function. This is Kathy Wolfmore.
Yes, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a little bit further information on what the governor did today. Her disaster declaration will last for 15 days, unfortunately, that's all she's able to do. And that's in response to what the chief medical officers from the hospitals across the state, their presentation yesterday on their state of crisis in the hospital. So it does two things. Number one, it'll give the hospitals relief to use their staffing in different ways that normally aren't allowed, and it also helps the adult care homes. So think of long-term care facilities, assisted living, to ease certain restrictions on them. That's all to help with the staffing because of the many, many, many people that are out due to COVID. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Senator Petty, did you have a question coming?
This was in relate, relating to the Youth Fatality Review Board, and I just, when you say supports continued refinement, I'm a little unclear as to what this is looking for beyond the legislation that we were able to pass last year.
Senator, I don't, I don't know that I can give you an answer to that on this, but can certainly follow up with Health Department to get with you on what specifically they had in mind with this.
So this came from the Health Department?
Did, yes.
Okay, I think, I, I mean, yeah, I'd appreciate that because I think the issue is really not legislative. It's how the state death review board is now allow, allowing the local youth fatality review boards to operate. Of course, I think we're the only, I think we are the only county that has one present presently. So we were successful in getting that included in the legislation last year. So it's, it's somewhat of a and not so much a legislative issue is a oversight from the state review board. But yeah, I'd appreciate more information from the Health Department. Thank you.
Okay, absolutely. Right, number 14, automated expungements. So this is as it sounds. So I'll just pause on this one.
Pam Curtis.
And thank you, Mayor, and thank you for including this. You guys deserve all the credit for moving this issue forward. I've been meeting with a group, Wesley McCain's began the effort through Healthy Communities Wyandotte, but they have, they built first locally, a group that was just very passionate about this issue and, and, and worked through the legislative process, including, you know, folks from Wydeck, from the Kansas Department of Commerce, from Healthy Communities Wyandotte, from the Chamber, from D A Dupree. And last year, we were successful in getting this issued study by the Kansas Judicial Council, and they came out with a recommendation in December that recommended we model a bill in Kansas off of how they do an automated expungement process in Utah. So that bill is getting drafted, but I tell you, Wyandotte County just deserves so much credit for moving this forward because it, it just wouldn't be where it is today if it weren't for your effort. So kudos to the staff and the coalition that they built because I, I think they have a good chance of making some progress this year. So I just wanted to share that because I, I believe in giving credit where credits do, so hopefully there'll be a story that'll share the story of how they built that coalition here.
Senator David Haley.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm sorry that I've been intermittent here. My daughter is going back to New York, back to school at law school, and my kid's leaving, and some of you all know how that is, is we separated again for the season. This is an issue, as Representative Curtis said, that's been on the radar for a while. We were encouraged by the camp that Wyandotte County put together through D A Dupree that assisted with expungements in our community. It was tremendously successful. And as listed as to why here in this bullet item, it's so crucial that we have it, what it will mean to so many people who have to check the box, if you will, and we're pleased the U G several years ago, under a previous administration, they banned the box. But to see that expansion and to not have to make a disclosure when one has served one's time and paid their debt as it is to society. So Pam Curtis has been a leader buttressed by much of what D A Dupree had begun through a camp that was held at, at the old tech center. And I just wanted to add special emphasis that we'll be doing what we can to add this. Finally, the Criminal Justice Reform Commission, which I'm pleased to sit, has also looked at various ways to trigger an automatic or at least an applied expungement to many of the cases that are out there as well, and hopefully in some form, in our final report, which will be presented or which has been in part presented, we'll be able to address it as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Burrows.
Thank you. In, in reference to that, we might want to share with individuals what the qualifying criminal records are that are included, so it doesn't look like it's an automatic expungement of felonies and violent, violent crimes committed against persons. So if one of you want to share what, what those particular qualifying criminal records are, I think it would be a benefit to the community.
Senator Haley.
Thank, thank you, Mayor, and that's an extremely important point. There are some crimes, especially that would not be listed for expungement. The, the, it's where the crime would meet, where the applicant, especially where the crime might be. We are particularly concerned about predatory crimes that might involve the vulnerable, like our senior populations, and to what extent those could be clear. Certainly, major, the major felonies, certain crimes, first degree homicide, homicide and murders. But by and large, it's the garden variety, low-level felonies and misdemeanors that would be eligible for the automatic. There still is an application process now that's available for every single, every single felony. That, that's available now. There's just a more lengthy process in order to have that considered. Thank you.
Representative Curtis.
And I, I will share, thank you, Mayor, I will share that the Judicial Council recommended a very much scaled back kind of a slow start, so automating the process for some very, you know, for things like diversions, for dismissals, for not guilty, things that really, people should not even have to go through that process. So starting there, and then, you know, there's going to be a process to adopt the technology. You know, that will all have to be developed, so you're still talking about a few years down the road. And then, once it's implemented, then that could be expanded. We in no way spoke of, of expanding the list of expungements beyond what is currently available. In fact, not including any expungement or automated, automated expungement for any crimes that would require like victim notification. So, but the bill will start out in a very narrow scope, just to get the process set up, and it will be on those that everybody found agreement on the Judicial Council, which included like not guilty's, diversions, dismissals. So that's where we start.
Commissioner Ramirez. Thank you.
All right, Mayor, keep, we'll keep moving here.
Before we move on, I had one item that I know we didn't put in our list, but I'll re-remiss if I didn't bring it up. If some of you haven't talked to our Wyandotte County District Attorney, something that he's really passionate about, he has really good information on, that kind of plays into automatic expungements, but is a public defender's office and support for that. He's brought real good data and real good information in that regard, and so he is seeking support from the delegation in that regard. So I encourage you to, at your convenience, meet with him, and he has excellent information on why that is so important and not just valuable to the unified government, but to the residents of Wyandotte County.
Representative Nguyen, Vatino Nguyen.
Thank you, and I apologize, there's a phone ringing. Just a minute. Okay, thank you. I just needed some clarification because I don't know if number 13 would include, since it's from the Health Department, would it include infant mortality and the high maternal health problem that exists in Wyandotte County?
And I believe we have a member of the Health Department, Bianca Garcia, in the attendees. I don't know if she can speak to this, but I'll speak, which is that any, this applies to any youth between, I think, zero to, I want to say 21, I believe it's beyond 18. And so, and any fatality for any reason, whether that is medical or whether that's a vehicular accident, or whether that's, you know, violence, all of those and everything in between is sort of subject to review by this Youth Fatality Review Board. And the, the goal of it is to get more information and better information about the sources and causes of fatality among, among youth within the community. That answers your question.
Well, thank you. It, it doesn't really, because it doesn't seem to have, I mean, first, all youth fatality is, is serious, but I'm just wondering if the Health Department and Unified Government is, is going to take a position on, and Representative Reese and I have worked for this for over 20, 30 years, about just infant mortality. But I look forward to having further conversations. So thank you.
All right. Bianca Garcia, do you want to add to that from the Health Department?
Yes, thank you so much, Alan. This is Bianca Garcia. I'm the Community Health Manager. So my division works specifically with infant mortality, the Infant Mortality Review Board that we have reviewing those cases and looking at implementation of different programming. So that is definitely something that's a priority for the Health Department. I know with this specific agenda item, we were looking at the youth component of that, so looking more at that 18 to 21, like Alan said, and trying to push for more confidentiality protection at the local level, because we have been having some difficulties with getting our local review board set up to obtain the data and the reports that we need to really assess these cases properly. And so that's what this one specifically focused on. I'm not sure if this is something we can adapt to include also infant mortality, infant mortality language. That's definitely a conversation that we can have with leadership here at the Health Department. Thank you.
Senator Pittman.
If Representative Ruiz wants to go before me, he's probably going to talk about the Youth Fatality Review Board. I'm going to talk about the, 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 well, I'm going to talk about something else. Louis, if you want to go first.
It's up to the mayor.
Representative Ruiz, you can go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Representative Nguyen and I have been working on this infant mortality data for quite some time. Wyandotte County has been second in the state as far as the infant mortality rate, and we found out that it was different events that led to that, but to pass, to pass that over and not make it a concern, to me, is, is very concerning for us as a delegation, since we're dealing on statewide level issues, you know, and, and also the suicide rate amongst Latina, Latino youth, and even, and are some of our adults, is, I don't know what, what Wyandotte County has to provide data on those issues, but as far as infant mortality goes, we know there's different things, and for the health commissioners or the Health Department, not to make that an issue, I, I think we need to discuss that very hard and heavy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Senator Pittman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I was going to talk about District Attorney Dupree's initiative around public defenders. You know, there's a passion of mine as well, as well as many of the folks on this call, I, I know. We did put money, more money towards public defenders last year, but, you know, two, three years ago, we were facing severe budget crises at state, and, you know, the people that, that really lost out, I mean, that's just a very, very constrained budget in putting public defenders out there. So, you know, I'm excited about the possibility of bringing more money. There were a lot of urban public defender offices that were basically being shut down. And the, the amount of cases these guys go through, and the guys and gals go, go through and have is incredible. So it's really, I think it's so imperative to, for the, you know, just, just to have the proper defense available for folks, no matter what their income, and not just go with these plea bargains that put them into the cycle of, of criminality. And the other thing I wanted to, Commissioner Davis, on the juvenile justice reform, I think the major initiative, just to kind of give a briefing, you know, it's from 2015, 16, there was a major bill passed that really was intended, I think, if I have my facts straight, to limit the amount of, like, the default incarceration of youth and to look for alternatives and to shut down some of the juvenile correction centers and, and do some reforms in there. And I think over the last five years, there's been results, and, and the results have been mixed. And I think that's what is going on right now, is reviewing over the last five years, some of the reform movements, what's happened, but still looking at some of the statistics that are troubling, like the rate of African-American kids versus other kids that are incarcerated at an alarming, you know, maybe four or five times a rate, and looking at what could be done outside of that and looking for support things. And so I'd encourage you to get more involved with that. I'm, I know I'm going to as well, so I'm excited to research more, like Representative Burrows, and get back with you and figure out more about what we can do in that area.
Leave, Senator Haley.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Briefly, just to add now to what Senator Pittman was saying and what you had brought up, sir, regarding the public defender's office, we are the largest county that is underserved in not having such an office, just to augment again what Jeff was saying, what Senator Pittman was saying, and it really is a pain. We extended the speedy trial provision during COVID, so we literally have people languishing in our jail, right over here on Seventh, right across from City Hall, languishing for a long time because they don't have counsel, and they don't have an opportunity to, to even bond out timely. So yes, it's just, I'm, I'm not going to take much more time with it. I'm glad that you brought it, although it wasn't on our agenda. I appreciate you bringing it, Mr. Mayor, and, and augmenting what D A Dupree has tried to do, and we'll be doing everything we can through bids or the Board of Indigent Defense Services and others. And we'll be doing everything we can through bids or the Board of Indigent Defense Services and others to ensure we have some equity in the defense representation that Wyandotte County sorely lacks, especially for the county of size that we are, where everyone else does have that. Thank you.
Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you, Melissa Bynum, at Large District One. I know that DA Dupree is in our attendees group. And with regard to the public defender, I think it might be helpful for us and the public here. What is the situation now in Wyandotte? Everyone who needs an attorney should be guaranteed one. So how does this system work now in Wyandotte? And how does the creation of the Public Defender's Office help that? Thank you.
Wyandotte County District Attorney Mark Dupree, if you can speak to that, if, if you're there briefly, you've got two minutes.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you. We're going to allow you two minutes so we can keep going. If you can at least inform the public and the legis, our legislators as to the need for the office that you've been advocating for.
Thank you so much for those two minutes. Here in Wyandotte County, we do not have a public defender's office. It was in the nineteen eighties that Johnson County received a public defender's office, as well as Sedgwick County that received a public defender's office. Wyandotte County, we have always had the appointed council system. And what that means is that the folks who are attorneys, who have their own private practice, the judges are allowed to appoint them as counsel to the cases. The situation has come to a place where there are about a three to six month delay in closing cases from the appointed counsel versus the private counsel. And many of that is because of the fact that we do not have a public defender's office where they would receive appointment of counsel within that first forty-eight to seventy-two hours of being arrested. Here in Wyandotte County, it's an average of seven days to receive an attorney to be appointed to that case and up to fourteen days to twenty-one days for that attorney to then see that defendant. And so oftentimes, we have defendants in custody who then are not seeing their attorney or not represented by counsel for that amount of time. And as a prosecutor, what that does is it delays justice for my victims. And the longer cases go on, the more likely defendants, witnesses, and victims disappear. And so my goal and hope is to get the same assistance that other counties have had, which is a public defender's office where we can move cases and rather than delay justice for many of our victims, to actually get that justice and not have this control where judges who are appointing attorneys, and quite frankly, at times, there's an appearance of conflict. Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Petty?
Thank you. I just wanted to go, I don't want to delay this either, but I want to go back to the Youth Fatality Review Board. And I, a couple of things, it is age one to twenty-four, actually. But the, the goal last year in the legislation was to include local communities' abilities to set up a Youth Fatality Review Board. And this is, and the model is what is in place at the state level. So it doesn't negate what the Commissioner, what the Representatives Reese and Nguyen have talked about when it comes to infant mortality. But this allows, the legislation now allows local county Youth Fatality Review Board, and as I said, right now, we're the only ones that had, have one in place to access records that were not readily available to them. And so I, I would, I'm just saying, I, the Health Department is not neglecting that area, but that was not the specific focus of this last year's legislation for getting the ability to have one, to be recognized, to have it in place, and also be able to access the information in a more direct manner than currently was in place.
All right, thank you, Senator Petty. That's Alan Howes, Acting County Administrator. And, and to your follow-up on that, very briefly, there is actually a fetal, a fetal infant mortality review board that looks at that zero to one, and that's been in place, the Health Department, for, I believe, about six years. And what I think Dr. Griner and Corvo and members of the Health Department would be happy to, to talk further with representatives about, you know, additional actions that could be taken to reduce infant mortality. It's certainly a recognized, recognized challenge. So let's, we'll keep moving here, if that's okay, Mayor. This next section, local government operations, home rule, local control, municipal utilities, the ability to operate that. Again, these are ones from, from previous legislative agendas. Managing public property, public right-of-way, including franchise fees and other revenues. Number four, this is the city elections remaining nonpartisan. Also, the location for city elections returning to the city clerk's office. And Commissioner Davis touched on this briefly in the December sixteenth session in terms of the, the system in which Wyandotte County operates, as do several of the other large jurisdictions within the state that have the Elections Commissioner appointed versus selected by the local commission. Okay. I'm going to kind of move through these fairly quickly. Infunded mandates, publication notices, open meetings and records, alternate construction delivery. Broadband, again, kind of tacking on with where the state is going and, and the importance of broadband to the economic health of Kansas City. Obviously, as the first Google Fiber City, we recognize that and, and recognize its importance. Public water supervision. Some of this has probably more to do with issues around water management in Western Kansas, but ultimately, that flows through the Kansas River, through our community. The building codes language, and then the small cell 5G installation language, which is again around local control to be able to manage the installation of that and control public right-of-ways. Keep moving here. Public health and environment. Number one, local Health Department funding and recognizing the importance of that and the need for continued investment in local public health. Number two, Medicaid expansion.
Representative Kathy Wolfmore?
Oh, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I was just going to speak for just a moment on Medicaid expansion. You might have heard that Democrat leadership proposed today to work on this year on Medicaid expansion, a constitutional amendment. So we don't have ballot referendums or ballot initiatives in Kansas as they do in the surrounding states. So the citizens can't bring forth something like Medicaid expansion like they can in other states. So this constitutional amendment would take two-thirds of the State House, the House and Senate, in order to get it on the ballot. As you know, we've tried for many years to pass Medicaid expansion. Thirty-eight states have done it, and we have not done it yet. And as in your little note there, there, at least eight thousand people would benefit from this and especially crucial during COVID. So I don't hold out a lot of hope, but I am glad to see we're still trying something to try and get Medicaid expansion passed in Kansas. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, we've got mental health in jails following Medicaid expansion. The T twenty-one policy. We have expedited partner therapy related to sexually transmitted diseases. Senior population, an area agency on aging. Just pause, any comments on any of those? All right. The energy efficiency and the statewide energy policy. We've got stormwater management in there as well. Infrastructure funding, this is language from, again, from LKM. And significant, of course, federal funding coming down around infrastructure. Let's see, I think we've got stormwater in there twice, we'll clean that up. Hazardous ways, clean air, and energy spikes, this one is new this year and it relates, of course, to the cold weather snap last year and the, the gas price spike in that. In the December sixteenth Commission discussion, there was a request to add language in there that recognized that we have the Board of Public Utilities and a locally-owned municipal utility and that they need to be part of any conversation around energy, you know, and energy pricing. Any questions or comments from commissioners or members of the delegation?
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Senator David Haley.
Well, either one, Mr. Mayor, thank you, I appreciate it. I am curious about the uniformity of what's coming locally and if there will be some statewide guidance on stormwater. There are different measurements that are made for how we measure or if the convener might share if there's some guidelines on the rate that will be applied, and not in great detail at this hour, of course. But there is some concern as to the amount of, or square foot and the measurement of that that might differ from municipality to municipality. And obviously, the state probably would not weigh in on what uniformity would look like. But I was, just was wondering if we might look at that. Actually, there were some different prongs in stormwater management one and stormwater management two that were offered. But I do want us to keep an eye on that. I know that there's been the theme of lower taxes that flow from local to state and back and forth. But this is something that is very much in discussion right now. Just thought I'd throw that out while both delegations are here and we're having this forum, because that could be a spike in and of itself if it's not carefully weighed. Thank you.
We have number fifteen, water quantity, and sixteen, water planning, again, both related to water resources across the state. And both are new for two thousand twenty-two. So there were, and this get a little messy, so I sort of apologize in advance, this is a working draft. So there were some of these items that were moved, that were into the document that have been discussed here this evening, as we've gone through this. There are a couple in here that I'll scroll down to that have not yet been touched on and wanted to get input or get discussion on. One is mental health in jails. This was intended to be part of kind of the original draft, and it got, got skipped over. So this is full state funding for community mental health services and treatment over incarceration of mentally ill in county jails.
Representative Kathy Wolfmore?
Thank you, Mayor. So just on the mental health in general, not particular to the jails. So last year, we passed something called Certified Community Benefit Health Centers. That is probably one of the most transformative things we've done in mental health in a long time. And what that does is certain mental health centers in the community mental health centers in the state that become certified get paid at a higher Medicaid level. And so it allows for them to expand their services and to focus on the whole person. And I'm really happy to report that Wind Up Behavior Health is one of those, of the five or six across the state that are certified. So that's, that's a really big deal. It'll allow them to expand their services and do more of what they're really so very good at. So that is a major, major advance in mental health in the state of Kansas. Thank you.
All right, the next item around medical marijuana. This generated some discussion amongst the Commission on December sixteenth in terms of basically the legalization of medical marijuana as well. So right now, this is not in the legislative agenda and wanted to get discussion with the legislative delegation before the Commission came to a decision on whether to include this or not.
Senator David Haley?
Thank you again, Mayor. This has been an issue. I don't need to tell anyone on this line. Kansas and Kansas City, Kansas, is the hole in a donut of legalization for marijuana for medicinal purposes. And it creates a whole slew of problems at the local and state level. I would hope that you would consider including this. It's been a topic of great discussion, even the governor. Governor Kelly wanted to marry whatever revenue was derived from medicinal marijuana to Medicaid expansion, our expansion efforts. So it would enjoy, I think, not only legislative, but executive support, at least in this upcoming year. So I would hope that it would be something that certainly the UG would wholly support. I know there's been some discussion from even our chamber, our local chamber of commerce as to what it means. And frankly, I don't think that there's the appetite to arrest or to prosecute even for low-level possession of marijuana in our city. If there is, I, I would certainly hope we rethink that with the strain on law enforcement and with our courts that we just discussed a moment ago when we were talking about injury services, to hold somebody for possession of a small quantity of marijuana. So anyway, I just hope that this is something that we could wholeheartedly endorse for so many reasons. Because frankly, Kansas is the only state left behind in all the surrounding Midwest states.
Senator Pittman?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd echo Senator Haley's comments that it's already passed the House. It's in the Senate, it's in a committee. There's a big appetite, I think, amongst a growing majority to move something out. And therefore, I do, I think the city, I think the UG should take at least some position on it. And I think your positions on ability to have local control with sales tax and leveraging XIC fees is a, is a fantastic one. And also the opt-in on this dispensary seems like a very relevant one. If nothing else, in the context, if medical marijuana should be, should, should be allowed, weighing in on those two pieces, I think, would be, would be in your, in your best interest as a statement. I certainly support it myself, and I know a lot of veterans in the community, as well as others who deal with autism and some other medical conditions. I don't know if it's autism, but I think it was autism, and there's another, a couple of other conditions where it does help people with cancer, et cetera, that are really pushing for this. So hopefully, we can take some kind of position, even if it's not as far as it's stated here.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Thank you, Bridget. To go back to what Senator Haley said, Kansas, we're behind on many, many things. Medical marijuana isn't the only issue, we're behind on a lot. But I, you know, sitting on this governing body, I, I support medical marijuana and I support, I think we should have it a part of our agenda. It's something that more and more people are seeing that it has a medicinal property and that many, many people in our state and even in our community here would truly benefit from allowing to have it, albeit that any disease or disease or condition that they have. Other states around us have it. They have shown that it works. If you're able to have a very well regulated system, it can work. It's, I have yet, and please, any commissioner or legislator, correct me if I'm wrong, from any state or community that has allowed medical marijuana into regulated, I don't think that there's been, excuse the language, I don't think all hell has broken loose by allowing it to go through. So I think it is, as one commissioner of the governing body, I think, I do believe that it should be part of our agenda. And I thank all the legislators who are, who are and who have in the past been working towards this. This is something that we need to do and would be very beneficial for the state and our communities. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, I echo what Commissioner Ramirez is saying. I think there's another component here, and this is just for the public. I read an article that said the state of Missouri got over $200 million in sales within fourteen months, just based off of medicinal cannabis, right? And so that is money that we were leaving on the table as a state. But specifically for Wyandotte County, that's money that we are leaving on the table that can go towards alleviating the pressure on property taxes, sales tax and things of that sort that can go towards public safety, parks and rec, our roads and things of that sort. And so there is an economic component here that we also have to include that we can leverage and really invest in our departments and amenities. But also, we can alleviate some of that property tax burden as well. Thank you.
Representative Curtis.
Thank you, Bridget. I hope you include it, I'm already on record of supporting, I've already voted for it. But one thing that you may want to consider including would be just a statement of reciprocity, since we are a border city. That's one thing that I'm seeing other states to make sure that they include is that reciprocity piece so that the revenue, you know, could, can go both ways. That's all, thank you.
I'd like to add as well, before I add, Commissioner, Representative Burroughs.
Thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, I ask that this be pulled off so we would have an opportunity to have a discussion this evening to hear from the commissioners in reference to the challenge we have as a local unit of government. And knowing that we have already passed it in the House, as it was stated earlier. This is an issue, medical cannabis has been one that I'm really pleased to see having what I would call an intelligent discussion, a low level emotional discussion in the chamber in the House to advance medical cannabis. And so putting this on the agenda this evening was an opportunity for the commission to weigh in and hear what we have to say so that we can come with the unified message and a unified delivery on how we move this issue forward. Our Senate colleagues are going to need our assistance and our community can be somewhat confused if we just throw the medical marijuana out there without specifics to it. So that's why I asked that it be presented to you all this evening collectively so that we would all have a chance to weigh in and have discussions.
Thank you. I'd like to weigh in as well, just to let everyone know that my support of the medical marijuana conversation at the state. But I think what's more important here locally for our communities is also talk about and something that I'm going to spearhead a conversation with the commission is minimizing the penalties for small quantities of marijuana in Kansas City, Kansas as well. So I think the two of those conversations go hand in hand. So thank you.
Right, we are almost at the end. I'm going to propose, Mayor, in the interest of time, because we do have an important COVID update following right on the heels of this. We have two items left, the active consent, which was a sort of a clarification question from Commissioner McKeonan and then the tobacco tax and perhaps, Mayor, we could save discussion for those for the 7:00 P M. I think we can work through those in a matter of a couple of minutes as we take up the legislative agenda as a whole. And then adjourn this and move into the COVID update following this.
Yes, quickly, I think I had a hand from Commissioner Bynum.
Thank you, Mayor, Melissa Bynum at Large District One. I'm in support of the statement being added regarding medical marijuana. And Mayor, I'm willing to participate in your efforts on the local municipal court aspect of the penalties we heard briefly on that topic at the Public Works and Safety Standing Committee probably two years ago because it was pre-COVID. But we began that discussion and I'm willing to continue exploring that. Thank you.
Thank you, I think I had one more, I'm not sure of the name, but if you'd like to speak briefly. Senator Petty, I believe you're next.
That's the name, Senator Petty. And thank you, Mayor. So I'm just going to make a remark on the remove active consent from the school surveys, very important issue. And all the points that are made there from the Health Department are so important. But you might want to refer to it as more an opt-in. And instead of having an opt-out, that saving, removing active consent from school surveys is definitely, is not a terminology that necessarily has been used in the discussion of this. But it is a, it is a very, very important, I hope you keep it on your agenda.
Thank you, Senator. Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to, very quick comments and then we can move on to our COVID update. Just as I said in the beginning, thank you to the legislators for coming tonight. And this is something that I guess I can have conversation with the mayor and the commission as a whole as well. I would, I'm going to propose that mid-session, we have something like this again with the legislators. I think it's important that we continue to have conversation and keep the lines of communication open. Because I know, fortunately, I'm able to have a relationship with almost the entire delegation. I know I can reach out to any of you concerning issues or what's ever happening in the legislature. But I think mid-session, coming to us again and reviewing the agenda and see how far we've come so far in the session with our priorities. Because I know that's something that I, and I know that we maintain good lines of communication between the delegation and the commission and the U G as a whole. But I just think it's something that we should look into. Thank you.
Senator Petty, if you want to follow up quickly.
Sorry for prolonging this, but you know, I think this is so important and I have been involved this both on the side of a commissioner and as a state elected official. But I would say, as I'm looking at this and as I pulled it up earlier today, this is an exhaustingly extensive list. So I would encourage you to look at, thinking about, what are your top five? Because it would really be helpful for legislators or top ten to, because as was mentioned, some of these are from the league and so they're maybe not the top. But there, I know that there are issues that are at the top of your list. And for myself, to focus on those is going to be pretty daunting. So maybe the discussion tonight will help with that. But I would, as I'm just going to say, from my perspective, if you come up with your top ten, that means that as I see these things come forward, I know that they're a priority for the U G. So I would appreciate that.
Thank you. Representative Tom Burroughs.
Thank you, Mayor. In to put this to rest this evening, first of all, as chairman of the delegation, I want to thank my colleagues for joining the commission this evening. But Mayor, I want to thank you and the commissioners for extending an invitation for us to have this public discussion this evening in reference to what is important to our local unit of government. And you have partners here that visits Capitol on a regular basis during the session. And to get to Commissioner Ramirez's comment, we have Tuesday luncheons that the delegation holds every Tuesday to have local residents come up and visit with us in the Capitol. And it usually runs anywhere from 11:45 to 12:30. And so I would encourage any of you that want to come up. The, and I do agree that Senator Petty did make comment about the issues that you presented us here. It is quite an exhaustive list, but I will share with you, the league of campus municipalities, though those issues will be presented throughout the entire legislative body. And those are, I don't want to say they're easy lifting, but we have a lot more voices at the table. And I would encourage Mr. Dupree, I know he's not a, he's not a person that doesn't visit the Capitol. He is there quite a bit. And I would extend him the opportunity to come up and give testimony in reference to the needs of the local DA's office so that our colleagues across the state understand the significance and importance of it to Wyandotte County. And with that, Mayor, I know we're up against the timeline, but I, again, I wanted to express appreciation to the delegation and to the unified government, to you, Mayor, for allowing this meeting this evening.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor, that's, I think, everything from the legislative delegation, we'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, I just want to, I want to send a sincere appreciation and thank you to our Wyandotte County delegation for this dialogue. It's valued, it's appreciated, and I think it's really beneficial to the community for all those that are watching and will watch this. Just seeing this level of communication and collaboration for the betterment of Wyandotte County. I mean, it's what's needed and I agree with Commissioner Ramirez. If we can keep this dialogue going and really find real solutions, like you've heard me say, to the real problems that impact the people that we serve here in Wyandotte County. So thank you all so much for your time and for your interests. And hopefully that you all will take some of the things that this body has presented to you and we're willing to work with you to move some of those things forward in a positive direction for the citizens of Wyandotte County. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Thank you so much. That concludes that part of the session. I will now turn it over to acting administrator of House for the update on COVID nineteen.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We'll spend the next half an hour or so talking about the state of COVID. In the community, we have a presentation from the Health Department and our health officers, Dr. Alan Greiner, Dr. Aaron Corvo. They'll be joined this evening by pastors Tony Carter and Glenn Brady from the Health Equity Task Force who will share also some of the outreach to the community that has taken place during the pandemic. And I'll note that while our health director, Julianne Van Leeu, usually kicks off these presentations, she is out on our new childbirth leave after having a healthy baby boy earlier this week. So to lead off this evening's update, I'll turn it over to Elizabeth Gronway, the Health Department's Lead Epidemiologist. Elizabeth.
Oh, thank you. Just wanted to confirm real quick that you're able to see the slides before I jump in.
We can.
Great.
Yes, thank you.
Hello, my name's Elizabeth and I'll get us started with our update. So to start with, I just wanted to review some of the work to date that the Health Department's been doing around COVID. I know we have some commissioners that might be newer to the work done at the Health Department. So I wanted to give kind of a high level overview of the great accomplishments that the Health Department's done throughout the COVID pandemic before jumping into our situational update. So to start with, we are continuing our vaccine and testing operations in 2022. Vaccination is more important now than ever for containing the spread of COVID. And so vaccination is still available through the Health Department. We are operating out of the Health Department building Monday through Thursday by appointment only. And then we also allow walk-ins at our old Kmart facility off of Seventy-Eighth and State, noon to 6:00 P M. And that's just on Fridays, but no appointments necessary. We offer all three of the vaccines, first doses, second doses, boosters, as well as vaccines for the five to eleven year olds. We're also continuing to work with our community partners and mobile events to make sure that we're getting out into the community to vaccinate. We're also continuing to offer COVID testing for the community. So we offer testing Monday through Friday at our old Kmart building, 9:00 A M. to 3:00 P M., no appointments necessary. It's walk-in, which is really huge because a lot of test sites right now have moved to appointment only due to the huge demand for testing. But we are still operating walk-ins and testing a huge amount of people. There's also testing at the Armory, the National Guard Armory closer to downtown, Monday through Friday, 11:30 to 8:00, and then Saturday and Sunday testing hours as well. And we continue to work with our community partners and doing mobile events for testing as well. In 2021, we administered a total of 133,645 COVID vaccines across three of our mass vaccination sites that we had open at one point, as well as mobile and community outreach vaccine events. And so that's a huge accomplishment that we're really proud of. And a lot of it was possible due to the huge amount of volunteers that we had. We had over 1,500 volunteers at one point in time helping us to administer all those vaccines. And then we also administered over 10,000 COVID tests just in the fourth quarter of 2021. And as I'm sure you're aware, there's been a huge increase in demand for testing. Just yesterday, we set a new record for a number of people tested in this single day. We tested 787 people yesterday at our Kmart location. We've also done extensive work with our community partners and outreach and engagement to get people vaccinated. We've done a variety of mobile events with churches, schools, businesses, homebound individuals. So that's been a great success. We've also worked extensively with community partners, Vibrant Health, Cross Lines, faith-based organizations, nonprofits. And then a big success story for us has been our Health Equity Task Force. And so I'm now going to turn it over to pastors Tony Carter and Glenn Brady so that they can talk a bit more about the Health Equity Task Force and the successes that they've had. Were they able to unmute?
Pastor Carter, if you could unmute.
Okay. Thank you all for allowing us to take a few moments to tell you about what we've done with the Health Equity Task Force. I think this has been a great group in Wyandotte County, not only leads for our local counties, but we lead for counties in the state. And many of the things that we have been doing, a lot of innovations and things outside the box to address testing in our community, we're working with community leaders and F Q A Cs. And even K D H E has worked with us. We've just been had a conglomeration of persons who are working from various groups to create the kind of synergy that I think is necessary to have the kind of success we've been able to have in our community. In our community, we've had tests, again, as she, Elizabeth said, at churches. We've been at other places in the community. We have worked with the homeless populations. We've worked with a lot of the different groups, Vibrant, Swope, Heart-to-Heart, Core Labs, Cross Lines, Care Beyond Boulevard, Kansas Black Farmers, the churches. We've had flagship initiative where churches work with other churches to chronicle and catalog the number of people who have been tested. We've worked with a lot of different groups and everybody put down their individual goals for the goals of helping the common good in our community. And I like that kind of effort, you know, historically, there have been inequities that have not been fair and equal across the board. And the Health Equity Task Force has really began to address a lot of those issues. And those groups have collaborated together and come up with testing sites in various parts of the community where the spread was the highest. We've been able to think outside of the box to do pop-up testing. We've been able to address vaccine equity, we've been flexible. Sometimes people couldn't get off early enough. Sometimes people couldn't get off early enough, so we would do it later. We did it on weekends and Sundays. And so we've been able to accomplish a lot of different things based on our collaborative efforts together. And we worked really, really hard prior to Kmart opened, when Kmart opened, that helped us to address some of the things when we expanded to, when we were able to expand to the Armory. It really helped us to really reach a larger segment of the community. And it's been a great, great help being able to work with them. The trust level that we have now because we've been working with the Health Department, Dr. Greiner, Dr. Corvo, Dr. Van Lu, all of those persons have really synergized our efforts. And we had groups from all parts of the community, the Community Health Council, led by Broderick Crawford and Dr. Solano. And incidentally, Broderick is in the hospital, and we're praying for him to recover. But we've been able to do a lot of different things. The task force representation includes residents, local community-based organizations, churches. We went to the schools, businesses, medical personnel, and the Health Department, and that has been great. Next slide. In conjunction with what we have done, we work with Rad X, who works out of, with the KU Medical Center, and we've been able to do this across the state. We've had ninety-seven events just this past year, one hundred and seventy-four days of testing availability, four thousand one hundred people have been tested, six hundred and eighty-one people vaccinated. And we've been able to work with groups like Telemundo and KPRT and a lot of the groups to get the information out. We've worked not just in the African-American community, but in the refugee community and the immigrant population and the Latino community by bringing all of these various groups together for us to work together as one for the good of our community. Testing and vaccine events, you can see thirty percent, thirty-three percent of what we did was done at clinics, fifty-four percent at churches, community centers, recreation centers, schools, and through a lot of the social services. And I'd like to, Elizabeth, if you will pull up the video, this is a video of one of our partner churches, New Bethel, and what they did and how we were able to come up with pop-up testing in our community and vaccines, as well as giving out food. And this church is an example. If you would play that video, and then after it's done, Pastor Brady, who is the pastor of this church, will speak to what they were doing.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and hit play now. If it doesn't work, please let me know. I'm hoping it will.
Elizabeth, sorry, before, given interest of time here, I just want to keep an eye on the clock. So if we don't, you know, if we can do a portion of the wraps of the video, if we don't, I just want to make sure we have time for the rest of the presentation as well.
Sure, I'll just play the first little bit so that we can kind of get media.
Thank you.
This is Broderick Crawford, president of the NBC Community Development Corporation, which is the outreach hall of New Bethel Church, where you can hear from the campus of New Bethel Church at our annual Thanksgiving outreach. We're giving away turkeys, hounds, chickens to our community. We have prepared today meals for seven hundred and fifty pounds. We're working with one of our community partners, Irving Community Connections, to be able to get a hygiene product. We got cans, we got turkeys, we have everything that you would need for Thanksgiving giveaway.
Yeah, today we're here at New Bethel Church down in Kansas City. We have free COVID vaccinations, Pfizer, Moderna, Johnson &amp; Johnson, the booster. Any questions eligible, we've got it out here today. Those $20 gift cards are not a supply flat. All right, I'll go ahead and pass it along, next slide. Or, oh, hold on, let me go back, and pass it along to Pastor Glenn Brady.
Yes, good evening, everyone, and to Mayor Garner and the others, we're glad for this opportunity to share with you. First of all, I've been involved with the Health Equity Task Force since its very beginning, which was around March of 2020. A group of religious leaders, community leaders, were asked to come together and to form a means by which we could discuss, receive proper information from the Health Department so we can know how to provide that information to our congregations and those in the community that they may be safe. I, as you, as you may remember, at the very beginning of this pandemic, which has almost been two years ago, our area made national news because of the deaths that were occurring, especially with those that attended a religious service. Well, this is one of the things that I do at New Bethel in my leadership. I engage wisdom with faith. I'm a faith believer, but at the same time, I know we must engage wisdom. The Health Equity Task Force has been provided the information from the Health Department, which are legitimate and provides the data that we can make proper decisions. I've used that information to share with other pastors, as well as my congregation. And I would like to say that, giving of course God the glory, in the two years, we've not had one person to die from COVID-19 in our congregation. We've had some, of course, who had COVID, but we have not had any deaths. There's been family members who've died, but I can say that because we follow the guidelines provided by the Health Department and our discussions that we have, we have utilized that wisdom with our faith. And that has certainly been quite helpful to us. I, right now at New Bethel, we still require everyone who attends to wear a mask. They don't have to be vaccinated to attend, but they do require, we do require everyone to be masked indoors. We recognize the degree of to which this especially variant can spread, so we want to keep everyone safe. Following those examples has helped us to be a leader, to provide the way and the guidance that is necessary. On our church staff, we required everyone to be vaccinated. Unfortunately, there were those, especially of the millennial genzer, they did not necessarily want to be vaccinated, but we required that because of the interaction that they had with the congregation. So I just want to say that we are applauding the Health Department especially. The data that they provide gives us on the task force the ability to have the information necessary to lead our congregations and the community. And I just want to say that on the task force, we're, we ask some very hard questions. We have some conversations that are sometimes seemingly controversial, but we're trying to get at the truth. And I'm grateful for the task force and hope that we can continue the opportunity to share, and this is needed in our community, especially our county, as you know, which does not have the best of records when it comes to health. But we are certainly doing what we can at New Bethel and many other flagship churches to improve the health equity of the Wyandotte County. So I'll turn it back to you, Elizabeth, and we can continue on.
Great, thank you so much for sharing that. So from here, I'm going to move into kind of a situational update on the very serious situation that is COVID-19 right now in Wyandotte County. So to start with, I wanted to talk about our seven-day rolling average. So that's the average number of cases each day that we're getting. As you can see, that number has drastically risen recently to the highest that it's ever been. When I put this slide together yesterday, our seven-day rolling average was two hundred and sixty-six, so that's two hundred and sixty-six people in Wyandotte County that are testing positive on average each day. But today, our rolling average is now three hundred and six. So even in the time from yesterday to today, it's gone from two hundred and sixty-six to three hundred and six, which are numbers that we've never seen before. And another important thing to note is these are just cases that are reported to us through labs and clinics and hospitals, not including the numerous home tests that are being done. So in fact, there's even more COVID cases in Wyandotte County just than what's represented in this drastic increase on this graph. We also track percent positivity to see how COVID's spreading. So sixty-two percent of people that are being tested are testing positive in Wyandotte County. That is also the highest that it's ever been and very concerning and shows just how high the community transmission is right now. Hospitalizations are also increasing quite a bit. One of the doctors is going to talk a bit more about hospitalizations later in the presentation because the hospitals are truly at a crisis level right now, and it's something that we should all be really concerned about. So this first graph here has hospitalizations for, new hospitalizations for COVID for the Wyandotte County hospitals. And you can see we're seeing a sharp increase. And then this next graph shows for the whole Mark region, so all of the counties within the Kansas City metro area, we're seeing an even sharper increase, which again is very concerning. We don't want to see our hospitals this full right now. And as a reminder as well, hospitalizations are actually kind of a lagging indicator. So I showed you that really steep graph before, about seven-day rolling averages for a number of new cases. Typically, when someone has COVID, it's a few, a couple of weeks before they need to be hospitalized. So we expect this hospitalization graph to continue to increase sharply just due to the number of new cases that we're getting each day. We're also starting to see an increase in deaths, which is, you know, the worst outcome that you can have if you have COVID and what we're trying to prevent. So since the beginning of the pandemic, we've now reached a total of four hundred and fifteen Wyandotte County residents that have lost their lives due to COVID. Last month alone, we had nineteen deaths reported to us, and so far in January, we're already at two deaths. And deaths are also a bit of a lagging indicator. So unfortunately, we do anticipate that more deaths will occur as a result of this surge that's going on right now. We're also seeing a lot of cases within our young adults and youths. So this graph breaks it down by age group for the last fourteen days. You can see that the people in their twenties, thirties, and then also the younger age groups make up the majority of our cases. The last two weeks as well, kids weren't in school, so we didn't have as many cases in those school-age kids, but school's back in session this week. And we're already seeing a huge increase in the number of cases in our schools, which has us really concerned. So we're going to continue to keep an eye on that age group and expect to see a lot more cases and thus community spread and the school-age groups as well. I finally wanted to go over some vaccination data so that we kind of know where we stand. We know that vaccination's very important, the best prevention that we have against COVID right now. So we've continued to track our vaccination numbers. These numbers here are for Wyandotte County residents, but it doesn't include people that were vaccinated outside of the state of Kansas, so it is a bit of a gap in our data that we're working to correct, but this is Wyandotte County residents specifically. So we have fifty-eight percent of our residents with at least one dose and forty-eight percent that are fully vaccinated. Fully vaccinated means two doses of Pfizer or Moderna or one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson. So we're still at less than half of our Wyandotte County residents that are fully protected against COVID. Another important thing to keep in mind is something that one of the doctors will talk about a little later in our presentation. The data's now showing that to really protect against Omicron, the new variant, people need boosters as well. So three doses is really going to be better protection than two. And right now, we only have about thirteen percent of Wyandotte County residents that have received a booster dose of COVID vaccine. So that leaves us very vulnerable right now in terms of vaccination. And then we're also tracking childhood vaccination numbers. We now have a vaccine available for five to eleven-year-olds. It's very important we get our children vaccinated so that we can keep them in schools and keep school transmission down. But unfortunately, we only have thirty-eight percent of children five to seventeen-year-olds old that have received one dose and twenty-eight percent of children that are fully vaccinated. So our childhood vaccination numbers are really lagging behind even the adult vaccination numbers. From there, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Greiner, and he's going to provide us an update on the hospital situation.
Thank you, Elizabeth, and thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us. I'll move through these, these next set of slides fairly quickly, so you may have been on the call yesterday that Mid-America Regional Council put together with chief medical officers. Dr. Stites from KU Medical Center talked about how hard things are right now for, for local hospitals. You saw the number of hospitalizations going up, even though this new variant, this Omicron variant, may be slightly less severe, even if it's a third less severe, if we get three times as many cases, which it looks like we will, we're still going to have the same amount of hospitalizations as, as we had, we had last year. And what's worse about it is that we're seeing so many staff get infected that we really have a major problem. So i-if you were to go to a hospital right now, for example, in a local ER, you would have a nurse taking care of you that was probably taking care of twice as many patients as that, in that ER, maybe three times as many patients in that ER as she normally, he or she normally would. And so one of the, one of the chief medical officers yesterday said that, that the, the mortality rate happening in emergency rooms, for example, is, is maybe three to five times higher right now than it normally would be. So they, they are very concerned. That's probably why the governor reenacted a state of emergency for, for the next two weeks, just this after, this afternoon. We have some treatments available now, which maybe you've heard about, that these monoclonal antibody treatments, one in particular is, is very effective against Omicron, but it's, it's very, very hard to get right now. And the supply, for example, at KU and most of the local hospitals, is, is being used up almost immediately when it arrives each week. And so we do not have enough. Right now, regular procedures are being, are being delayed, a-as is other, other routine care to try and care for COVID. Next slide, Elizabeth. The hospitals in our region, out in rural areas, are hit very, being hit very hard, too. I heard about one hospital this week that, that had to call a hundred and fifty hospitals to, to try and get a transfer to happen. So, so that's a, that's a huge issue. And like I said, it's affecting all the conditions, not just COVID right now. Next slide. We're concerned about things like long-haul COVID. We don't know with Omicron, even though it might cause, you know, a slightly lower number of hospitalizations and deaths, is it going to cause a long-haul COVID where people have long-term fatigue, long-term symptoms like cough and headache and difficulty sleeping and memory impairment? Some of you may know some people who have been affected by this. I certainly have patients who have. This is the kind of thing we can avoid if we get more people vaccinated and we, and we do other things to mitigate, mitigate spread. Next slide. So right now, we think about sixty percent of the infections in our county are the new variant, our Omicron, but we still have, that means we still have forty percent of those infections. So if we're getting three hundred a day, as Elizabeth said, we're still seeing a lot of Delta infections. So that's going to be a lot of serious illness and lead to lots of hospitalizations and deaths as well. So any, again, anything we can do, and I'll show you the Swiss cheese model just as a reminder here in a minute, anything we can do, we need to be doing to, to help the situation. Next slide. So why are we concerned about this? Again, I mentioned how it's more transmissible. It's, it's, it's probably two to three times as transmissible. There's something called the R not, or R zero, that, that tells you how transmissible. If one person has it, they're probably transmitting it to seven to nine other people, and that math goes up very fast. And that's why those curves that Elizabeth showed us go up so fast. Next slide. So we also know that it's, it, it tends to get around vaccination better than Delta and, and some of the prior variants. The booster is more important now, and that low number of people having received the booster for us is a problem because it can, it can get around that. In fact, it is infecting some people who have even had the booster. The symptoms are a little bit different. People tend to have a sore throat, congestion, headache, maybe not quite as much breathing problems, but it doesn't look like a prior infection with COVID is protecting you very much from Omicron. It can get around that immunity that a prior infection caused. And, and again, maybe the hospitalization risk is, is half as much or even a third as much, but because it's hitting so many people, we're concerned. Next slide. I mentioned this earlier, what we've been saying from the very beginning of the pandemic is we need multiple measures to reduce spread. And, and so things like wearing masks, getting vaccinated, washing hands, social distancing, avoiding large gatherings, if you layer those together... If you layer those together, you make it very hard for that virus to get through to that individual on the, on the left side of your screen. But, but if we start letting down our guard on things, we lose the opportunity. And I, I think as we've said before, and as, as pastors Carter and Brady talked about, this county has been a leader in some ways and, and putting some stuff out there that our, our population could, could latch on to and take advantage of uh in a way that what, that has been emulated by the state. You know, our Health Equity Task Force was, was basically, that idea was taken and the governor put it together at the state level. And I believe Pastor Carter sits on that, that Health Equity Commission for the governor. We gotta do, we gotta keep layering the Swiss cheese together. And, and as you're seeing, that's starting to happen with some of the things we're seeing in our region. Next slide. There was a question last time about masks working. We could certainly have a, have a sideline conversation about this. But there was a study actually last year with Kansas data of the counties that kept the mask mandate in place and the counties that did not. There were twenty-four with and eighty-one without, and there was a significant difference in the number of COVID cases that occurred in the short timeframe after, after those mandates were either put in place or not put in place. We'd be happy to share that, talk about it more. There's also great data from the school systems this fall for school systems that had it and didn't have it in terms of who had cluster outbreaks and who didn't. Um, so, so we, we are certainly in favor of that. Next, next slide. And, and, and like I said, things are going on. The governor re-initiated the emergency declaration today. Saint Louis reinstated a local mask mandate this week. Douglas County just uh yesterday, I believe, reinstated their local mask mandate. Johnson County, as of today, extended their mask mandate for five to eleven-year-olds. Kansas City, Missouri, as of today, put in place a mask mandate for five to eighteen-year-olds, I believe, all K through twelve schools levels. Um, so, so people are, are, are moving in, in our region. And, and we, we have been a leader and been emulated and, and, and so if we can do that, we want to do that. Next, next slide. So you, you know, many factors are, are, are against us here. Um, you may have seen data on South Africa, which was hit hard by, by an Omicron surge, and then it went back down quickly. Well, they weren't in wintertime there and they have a slightly younger population than we do. Um, and, and we don't have, you know, we don't have that many people vaccinated that, as we've talked about. We've got waiting immunity for people who had prior infections. Um, we're worried about long COVID. We know about the hospital resources. Kids under five have no ability to be, to be protected by vaccines. And if you heard any, if you heard the Children's Mercy, uh Chief Medical Officer yesterday, she talked about how they're, they have more children in, in Children's Mercy right now with COVID than they've had at any point in the pandemic. So that's, that's a concern as well. The next slide. So I, I, I think I'm gonna kick it back to uh to Dr. Corvo, our deputy uh uh Health Commissioner, and let her talk about this and just kind of sum things up. And, and then I know we're running short on time, so we'll keep you guys moving on things.
Thank you, Dr. Griner. Um, good evening, everybody. Um, we have heard about.
And I just interrupt for just a second. I'm sorry. If you can narrow your response down to three minutes, um, as we, we have to move the meeting along. Thank you and I apologize.
Um, absolutely. I'll narrow it to, to one minute, actually, to help things along. Um, th- thank you all for listening this evening. I just wanted to mention that we at the Health Department are doing our best to take into account as many innovative strategies to control this virus and to keep our uh community safe as possible. I wanted to recognize this evening, um, the contribution and the, the help and partnership um of uh the commission uh and uh, and our, our leaders in this community as well throughout this pandemic and, and to say thank you to you all. We, we need you more uh now uh than, than ever. Uh, we are, are in a, a very difficult place right now uh in, in our, in our community, at our Health Department. Uh, our, our staff are, are stretched and, and certainly within our hospitals, as you all have heard. Um, we did want to bring forth a strong recommendation that you all consider uh a mask requirement within our community. As we've seen this evening, uh that, that we know that mask requirements make a difference and decrease the spread of this, uh, this disease. Uh, and with that, we'll finish up and take questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm gonna keep my comments very, very brief. Uh, that I'm not gonna beat a dead horse, but the governing body and staff know where I stand on this and my thoughts. Um, but I will say, I believe with us having, allowing us to expire the previous mandate, in my opinion, we have opened Pandora's box and now we cannot close it. Because it, it just, we can't. Um, it, 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 it really, it does bother me that we allowed that to happen. We are seeing our healthcare professionals every day sacrificing themselves to the brink where their mental, physical and psychological well-being is just not good. They're tired. And yet we just allowed it to go away and we're, I know we're doing what we can, but that mask was some, the, the requirement was, was something extra that we could help them with. I, if I even tried to bring this recommendation to the board as a, or as a resolution, I know I would kind of have the support. But I, it would be a disservice to my district who supports it if I didn't continue to fight for them and fight for the healthcare professionals who are on the front lines every single day. They see what happens. So thank you to, to all of our nurses, doctors, everybody who have, who continue to fight for us. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis, uh apologies. Um, if you could keep it to thirty seconds or less.
Yeah, I just have a question very, very quickly. Uh, I think that with where we are at, there, there needs to be another step forward, right? As far as how this is controlled. Um, and anybody can answer this question. Do hospitals have the right to deny care to folks who have COVID but have been eligible to be vaccinated for a while now? Do they have the right to say, hey, we have other patients who have other things that need uh attending and care? We cannot treat you or, or we are choosing not to treat you because you chose not to get vaccinated. That's my question. Thank you.
If someone could answer that in ten seconds or less, that would be great, please.
It's a tough one to answer ten questions. They, they're not really allowed to do that because of them Tala laws that require people to be, receive care. There are crisis um methodologies in place in hospitals now to, to allow them to start to triage what they offer. It's complex, but it's been, it's, it's a work in progress.
Thank you. Um, in the interest of time, I'm gonna have to uh move this along. Um, I appreciate the work that um the task force, the Health Equity Task Force has put in on trying to um get the resources to our community. Um, I'm, I talked to KU, the executive leadership yesterday, and, and I'm just gonna be frank. Um, the majority of the people that have been hospitalized have not been vaccinated. I can't say enough and stress it. Um, even though we don't have a mandate, uh we still have an opportunity to be, to make responsible determinations for our shared health considerations. I encourage everyone from this education, vaccinate, vaccinate, vaccinate. It is free. That will mitigate and hopefully in time we can eliminate this ugly virus. I'm gonna continue this conversation um with your commission and hopefully we can have a, another option uh for review at the next commission meeting. Um, with no other questions or comments that I see in the interest of time, um, thank you. That concludes our special session. We are adjourned. We'll reconvene at seven PM for our plan, I'm sorry, for our next meeting. I'm sorry, seven oh five.